Board of Selectmen meeting to order. And this is May 26. And. Okay, the full board is in attendance. And the first item is budget deliberations. And I would like to start with reviewing with the board information that was sent to them by email. And it includes a copy of the 2020-2021 budget with the changes that were discussed at our meeting last Wednesday, the 20th of May. In addition, my office has prepared two resolutions. One is an adoption of the budget based on the information that we last had on the 20th. As you'll recall, we had determined back, I think in April, that we would review our budget on the 20th of May. After we had deliberated on the 19th, if I'm not mistaken. Seems a long time ago, but it isn't. And that we would formally adopt the budget this week. So hopefully you received that, the budget and the resolutions. Did anyone not receive it? So everyone received it. In addition. I received an email this evening from the Chairwoman of the Board of Education. The Board of Education met at 7:00 this evening. And I'll read the email to you. Says, "Good evening. After much discussion at our meeting earlier today, the Board of Education has reached a consensus that we will be able to reach the targeted reduction in our proposed budget as indicated at your meeting last week. The Board recognizes the difficult decisions that we as a town have to make considering our present circumstances and all that remains unknown. We are ready to work with the Selectmen to meet these challenges. Our priorities are the same to ensure that the children of Portland obtain the best education we can give them. Very truly yours, Sharon Peters, Chair of the Board of Education." So I believe they met tonight at 5:00 and had discussion. So as far as budget deliberations go, I think Ralph has indicated he wanted to speaks and everyone will, of course, have a chance to speak.
Thanks, Susan. Thanks. I just want to take a couple of minutes here because, as you know, I certainly do monitor what is said out on Portland's social media sites. And I do take it to heart what is put out there. I do review all and, as you know, I had no issue with when people have said incorrect things about the Park project. I've been quick to point those things out to make sure that people that are reading that site are working from true information and not getting information that may be inaccurate or just plain wrong. So that being said, you know, the situation we have here is, I guess, I was just a little disappointed because, you know, we had a situation where we had members of one board criticizing members of another board within the town. I just don't think that's appropriate. And that's why I didn't engage in any of the comments that were made directly online because I don't think it's appropriate for us to have these type of discussions and discussions in a social media environment. That being said, what I'd really like to do is just take a couple of minutes to address some of the questions or some of the comments that were made. And after having sat in the Board of Ed meeting at 5:00, also some of the things that I will talk about will be relevant to what was being discussed there. So I think it'll add value to what was discussed there. So what I have is a few things I want to cover. First of all, I know there was a lot of discussion about the fund balance. And why can't we just use the fund balance consistently? That was the discussion. And numbers are thrown around about the fund balance. So I know Tom has given an explanation what fund balance or fund balance situation was a few times. And, you know, I will admit, when he gave it, I've sat here. I wrote numbers a few times and I've had to go back and and verify some of those numbers because he's rattling off a lot of numbers. But I think what's important for people to understand about the fund balance is that where we start, when you look at the fund balances, we start about 6.6. And, you know, my numbers would be closer than ours Tom has given. And Tom certainly could correct me if I misstate anything. But we started approximately $6.6 million, which is about 19.47% of what we need for our budget. When Tom goes through his numbers, he's reflecting the numbers of things he knows are going to have to come out of that balance. So when he talks about the money we owe for the deficit in water and sewer or the $600,000 appropriation we did or the $300,000 that we've already stated are going to be part of this budget that we have in front of us, those numbers come into play. So once you take those into account, what he's then getting down to is $4.48 million, around there. And that is really 12.7%. So I know everyone looks at the 19% number and thinks, well, that's who we're working from. Well, right off the bat, we're really starting at 12.7% or around that range, pretty much close to that. Now, when you talk about how much do we really need? If you recall, Tom indicated that most of the states in the nation have a higher than a 19% fund balance. What I took from what he said was that they've allowed the Northeast to have perhaps a smaller fund balance because of the nature of how things are situated here. But that's ultimately what we're sitting at. So you're talking at, to me, what's important is he's telling me we have a 4.48 fund balance. So now let's go back and look another part of the budget. We have in there the anticipation that we're going to get $4.5 million from the state. And that is what we typically receive in the cost sharing for our education. That money is not guaranteed. In fact, a couple of years ago, Governor Malloy was talking about not giving it to us at all. We don't know what's going to happen. We're staring at unprecedented times now. My gut is we could potentially lose some of that fund balance. I mean, some of that cost, the revenue that we would get from the state or funds we get from the state to run our education. Ultimately, where are you going? You're going right to our fund balance. Well, I just told you we have $4.48 million and we get $4.5 million from the state. Now, it's probably highly unlikely that they would just say we're going to zero. But it just begs the point to emphasize that that is where people are going to come from. I mean, that's where we're going to have to come looking for. If all of a sudden there's incredibly drastic cuts to the education budget, where else are we going to have to go to? In lieu of doing drastic cuts of our staff, we're going to have to look at touching fund balance. The other thing you have is that we're kind of, we're staring, and I, right now, the focus at the schools has been on distance learning and end-of-year activities. Because mainly they're kind of a holding pattern because they are waiting for some sort of guidance on what's really going to be in play from the state in terms of what the guidelines are going to be for fall opening. So right now, we have no idea what's going to happen in the fall. So it's very difficult for us to really predict what kind of a cost that could be. It could be that there'll be other funds that will cover us, maybe we don't know. So again, where are we going if we have to deal with that? We could potentially looking at that fund balance once again. So that's why I know it's just flippantly said, let's just take money for the fund balance. I don't know where you draw the line, but you're staring at some numbers that are, you know, scary in terms of how we would finance our budget or cover our expenses. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that, as Tom has pointed out as well, is that fund balance will drive what we get for our credit rating. And that credit rating ultimately impacts what it costs for us to borrow money. So we certainly have talked, you know, and I know we'll be talking much more in the next few years about what has to be done to the schools. But ultimately, I anticipate that we're going to be doing several years from now, when the bonds, bonding we have right now rolls off, we're probably going to be adding another bond in order to try to cover some of the things we have to do in the schools. So ultimately, if we have a poor situation with our fund balance, that's going to impact how much it's going to cost us to borrow that money. And we're going to be putting money towards something that we won't be able to use those funds to be used for the actual work itself. It'll just be carrying the cost, covering the cost of what it is in order to do, to loan the money. And one other thing I just wanted to comment with regard to that. I know there was a comment made about the rental, the rental revenue number that we talked about and that it's somehow it's not, you know, there was a question called into it. But what you need to understand is that is the town's attempt of trying to be diligent and save money for the taxpayers in trying to either rent or sell property that we have within the town in order to save the cost, to try to save some of the funds that we may need to put somewhere else. So it's not, you have, yes, it translates if we don't, aren't able to do that, we probably could potentially looking at fund balance. You need to keep that in mind. So it's not a number, it's a number we're hoping to hit and that's what the town is proposing. The second thing I wanted to cover is just briefly talk about the appropriations we recently did. And there seemed to be something called in a question about that, which I didn't understand. As we talked about, these were items that that ultimately have been sitting and needed for many years. So it made sense with the additional appropriation funding that we had that we could make, we could act on them and finally do them. Keep in mind, one of the items, some of the, two of the items in there were actually going to the Board of Ed, which was $106,500 in terms of doing security and HVAC work. So there was work going to the Board of Education. So the other thing that's certainly there is we talked about fire safety equipment. We were covering fire safety equipment. And that's critical. And and the other thing is the dump truck. I know there was a question about this dump truck. Now, I heard Bob explain at least four times, maybe six times. The reason why we have that dump truck situation is that we have two dump trucks that are, dump trucks that are extremely old and could die at any point. And they, one of them has to be critical in our, in part of the process we have in terms of snow blowing, snow plowing in the winter. So we can't afford to not have the dump truck we need in order to ensure the safety we have on our streets. So anyway, I want to make sure people understand that. I don't understand why that's getting questioned again. Third thing was, you know, talking about whether we really listen to the taxpayers. So I will tell you, what we looked at was we received 66 emails from 58 of either taxpayers or teachers within our system. When I looked at those, essentially, essentially all of them, with the exception of a few that were saying that we shouldn't have any decreases, any decreases, I mean increases, that they were supporting the budget. First of all, they supported 3.8, then they supported 2.8. So we had some people I replied multiple times. But ultimately, what came out of it is there were 24 individuals that specified that they were concerned about teacher cuts and staffing. And as we, you know, we stated last week, we did take that into account. We did hear that. And what we did is we looked at numbers and that's what we truly believe the numbers we looked at. We wouldn't require to have any teacher cuts. And that's what we did. So we certainly listened to what the people had to say in town. And lastly, the other thing I want to just note is that, you know, there's some question called into whether we write things down or things are available online. I don't understand how this comes into play because everything we do is documented. Everything we do is available online. So it's not like we're doing something that we're doing secretly. Even the numbers that we did to calculate and get a sense of what we thought could, change we can make to the Board of Ed budget was based on Phillips' three-tier Board of Education list that was reviewed and shared at the Board of Ed meeting. So it's not any sheet that we magically created or put aside. It was using those specific numbers. We use numbers off that and I still stick to my belief that we are still to do without teacher teacher cuts, but that's ultimately, obviously, that long and very productive discussion at 5:00 is to address that. We're obviously here to just address what we put out for a budget. I guess, you know, it's, the last point I wanted to make is just, I want, people need to step back and look at the situation we're dealing with. You know, we, we need to make sure that we're all fiscally responsible because what we're going into and what we're going to face in the next 12 to 18 months, it truly is unprecedented. We don't know what's going to occur. We may think that it's going to go a certain way, but that's all we have to go for us. I mean, when you look at the chart of people that are unemployment, the unemployment postings, it's off the chart. You see it go along and then it just spikes for the last couple of months. I mean spikes, it's not like every, all, from the 1930s, it went along and it just ramps up incredibly. When you look at the food bank and how much it's needed and the food distribution centers that have these long lines where people are needing food, we are in a very serious crisis. And people need to understand that is our job in order to make sure that we represent just as much as the kids in the schools. We're representing those people and maybe standing in line at the food bank. We really do cover everyone. This is not easy. Believe me, every cut we talk about, it hurts. I sat down and listened to the discussion today. It hurts when I listen to them talk about cutting teachers. None of us here are out to cut teachers. We don't want to do that. We hate having to have an impact that's negative at all on the Board of Ed. But ultimately, it's the situation we're entering in terms of trying to do what's fiscally responsible for the town. So it's going to be really critical that we work together. I know that Sharon made that same comment on the Board of Ed meeting. And I certainly believe that we all, I know that the Board of Selectmen are certainly on board with it. They're good people. We've worked hard together. We work well together. And we will work well, I hope, with our Board of Education members to make sure that we could do what's best for the town and what's best for the kids. So I just, I just had to put that out there. I couldn't let things be unsaid. That's sometimes how I am. But, but I just want to make those critical points so that people listening, and I know a lot of people on this call are people that are following that, those posts, that they get more information and may help them understand what we do and why. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I know that we put out the suggested amendments in the budget document. Were there any questions that you had on those? Because I know that you had indicated some of those changes and reductions.
Yeah, I think the only, the only thing that we've been trying to do, and it goes to trying to figure out and really taking a look at what's coming, what we've gotten from feedback. And I get to say thank you to all, everyone who's sent information or made a phone call or sent texts. And there's been a lot of, obviously, a lot of good feedback, which in this year, I think is very important, given the fact that we have to do this slightly differently, or very differently than our normal process, given the pandemic. In looking at this and trying to work through and keep and reduce the mill rate a little bit further, I don't think there's no additional cuts. I think that we were looking at per se, from the discussion we have. And there may be some additional discussions as we go forward. But, but in terms of trying to look at the revenue side and what we could do and, you know, looking at, can we realistically, you know, and trying to enhance the rental revenue? And and in trying to get the mill rate down a little bit lower, one of the things we have, I guess, talked about is the prospect that was mentioned about renting or selling one of the buildings. In that spirit, looking really from the revenue side, it was take a look at, taking a look at selling one of the, one of the buildings. I think one of the ones that's been discussed, for example, was the old decommissioned firehouse that is not really in use anymore. And in doing that, what we look at is basically, instead of trying to get an additional $100,000 in rental revenue, we would target an additional $88,500 in rental revenue. But we would try and target $100,000 in sales, sale of property, right? So that would be a little bit of a reduction on the revenue line item 00303 from where we were the other night. That would go down, I believe, to $361,300. And the sale of property line item would go to 00405. That would go for $100,000 as we look to sell the property. One of the reasons looking at that is that over the next six months, we know the economy is going to be unsettled and trying to generate rental revenue could be a little bit more challenging. But if we do target it from the prospect of perhaps selling a building, it doesn't matter. If you rent a building in March, you only get a few months worth of rent in that fiscal year. If you sell the building in March, you get the full amount of it and it helps the budget in that budget year. So this is one mechanism for doing this without going to fund balance and also putting the property back onto the tax rolls. Aside from that, there were no other changes. It would basically leave, from what I can see, the increase to the town budget, to the town operating budget would remain at, the numbers I had were $83,525 would be the increase for this year. The increase to the Board of Ed budget would remain $480,000. And the numbers I have, $480,422.63 for this year. So no change to that, but it would change the revenues. That would result in a reduction in the mill rate to, I believe, 34.38, which would equate to about a 1.7% mill rate increase to meet that funding level and that anticipated revenue level. So I think to answer the other questions, I don't think it would impact the first of the, it would not impact the first resolution because the expenditures would remain the same. It would impact the second resolution in that it would reduce the mill rate from what was projected at 34.48 to 34.38. If obviously Tom agrees with my math.
So what is the net?
Say that again, Tom?
Can you tell me what you want to do with the property rental line item?
The property line item, we had originally, when we decided to take and take $250,000 out of it, we looked to restore $100,000. So that line, right? So that was, I'm sorry, what's that?
For the $100,500, we restored.
Yep, they, right. So we would be restoring, basically, we'd be moving that. So instead of restoring the $100,500, we'd restore $12,000 less to that line item. And then, and then, and then the line item for sale of property, we're looking at selling that building, we would target $100,000. So that line item, which would be 00405, would go from $0 to $100,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Rick.
Yeah, I'm just, what would be the, on the property rental? Would it be an even $361,000?
I think it was, what I had was 361,300.
Okay. Did you double check your numbers?
The, if I'm going, yeah, the original number before we added $100 back, $100,000 back in was 272,800.
Right.
And then if you add the 88,500 on to that.
Okay, that's where we got the 300.
Yep, 361,300.
Okay. All right, yep, that ties out, okay.
Did that match with you, Rick?
Yep. I was missing that 300. And I was having trouble figuring out where it was.
That's, that's, that's last, last, last week I was missing the $50. We finally figured it out, so, yeah.
And Jim, what is the? Hold on. So the mill rate would be, the increase in total mill rate would be .657?
No, the increase in mill rate would be .568 or really .57.
Okay.
Right, and I think that was one of the targets, was to get it down. Keep it in mind that last year, right, we had a zero mill rate increase, which would mean if you look at it over the two years, the mill rate will have gone up, you know, an average of .28 or .2, yeah, .285. And it was an average over the last two years of a percentage increase of .85%. That is obviously one of the challenges as we try to do this, is that, you know, we did a 0% last year. It's very difficult to do a 0% two years in a row without causing a lot of real structural impacts. And, you know, there was a very good, robust discussion with the Board of Ed. And again, trying to go to 0% would be very difficult at this point with them as well. So that's why these numbers are the way they are. It's why it's hard to go to zero.
So Jim, you were looking at a total expense of 35246255? No?
Yeah, we did not change the expenses at all in talking about this.
All right. The mill rate goes to 34.38, .57?
34.38, exactly, yep. Yep, which should be about 1.68%.
Yeah, I remember it was 1.66, I was close enough.
Yep.
So what is our amount to be raised line? Does that change, that $28,957.795? What would that?
The amount to be raised from taxation?
No, wait a minute. What's our, what's our total revenues going to be? The new number?
Total revenue would be, it would, it would be the same. It would be 34946255, which would be $300,000 less than than what was, you know, than the use of fund balance. So the total revenue would be the 34946. But the amount raised from taxation would be 28861455. Direct revenue would be 6517721.
Repeat that last one, Tom? Direct revenue? Okay.
Do you have other questions, Rick?
No, not at this, not at the moment, thank you. I mean, I'll just, well, I'll just comment. I think everybody worked long and hard on this. And And I think, you know, we wanted to keep this mill rate increase as low as possible. I, I for one, wanted to keep it something under a half, half a mill or around a half a mill, and we're pretty close. And I, I think there's been, it's, let's move in one minute, that. We've really crunched numbers. And given this situation, the circumstances we're facing, that this is a reasonable budget. And I thank all the selectmen for their work that they've, that they've done.
Are you making a motion to adopt the budget?
No, I think we should let anybody else speak if they want to, and then I'd be happy to.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak?
Lou here.
Lou?
I was, you know, initially, I think we had a conversation, and I was concerned with the hundred and fourteen thousand because it sounded like it was going to impact teachers. And then in the meeting today with the Board of Education, it did sound as if it was going to impact teachers. But it sounded like the teachers that they were going to cut, or at least propose to cut, wouldn't have an impact on the students at the school. Except maybe the social studies position might not have to be fully cut, but maybe they might need a, a point five position. So that, you know, they probably can work within their budget to make that work if, in fact, they need to have that done. Then there were some other concerns about the Level Two part of the budget. And if you take some money out of the Level Two without taking teachers, and then some other things, it comes out to about eighty thousand dollars for a cut versus a hundred and fourteen. But in looking at the broader picture of what the Board of Education has said today, and what Jim has proposed, and what all the selectmen have worked very hard, I have to agree with what Rick said. I want to thank Tom and you for, Susan, for your hard work. This hasn't been easy, and it needs to be, as Ralph said, a compromise so that we think of the people who are out of work, the people that aren't fixed incomes, but also the children, the teachers, and the Board of Education, so that we balance that off as well, as well as other departments within the town. So I'm in agreement, or I feel that it would be fair for the hundred and fourteen thousand dollar cut from the Board of Education. There was one minor thing, but maybe that can be taken care of later, is that the Park and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan, there was a reduction of three thousand dollars for the Airline Trail. For that Airline Trail Committee to keep working, they need a consultant. Might not need the whole three thousand, but maybe you can come out of the Park and Rec funding in another department or another section. I'm not sure how that works. So we could leave that, that three thousand dollar cut, but maybe go back to the Park and Rec and say, how can we come up with some funding for that consultant we need for the Airline Trail? So with that said, I'm, I'm in agreement with where we are right now. And if any other Board of Selectmen would like to speak before we move forward, I think that would be good.
Thank you, Lou. Michael, Tolton?
Yes, just, yeah, just for one sec, just a couple of things I wanted to echo that's already been said. This, we have looked at this budget from top to bottom, and we've tried to pull out everything we can and still keep quality on both sides. And again, the last thing we want to do is, is have any teacher lose their position. But I do too feel comfortable with this. I think it's a good budget. I think we've come together and done it the right way. I do have one request from Tom, though, because it was brought up a little earlier. I know some people have had some confusion about the fund balance and where it's at and where it goes down to. I have a pretty good handle on it, but Tom, if you could explain it one more time slowly for those that are listening, because that was something that people were wanting to know more about. From my understanding, I'll, I'll take you where I know. We have six point six.
Good. So fund balance as of six thirty nineteen is unassigned fund balance in the general one was six point six, four, six million, five hundred and two dollars. At the time, at the end of June thirty, the sewer operating deficit was seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, six forty-eight. The water operating deficit was five hundred and eleven thousand, two twenty-one. That is a total of one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight sixty-nine. The only place at the time of June thirty for that to be offset is the, is all of the restricted, understrined fund balance. So that is a deficit position in the water and sewer. So therefore, the, the way that is in theory funded is by held by utilizing the fund balance from the general one. We try to get it back from water and sewer users, but it's held at that point in time, you're in a deficit position, therefore, lower. So your, your unassigned fund balance after the water and sewer deficit is five point three, seven, six, thirty-three, which averages about fifteen point seven percent amount. The usage of fund balance for capital items is six hundred and ten thousand. This raises around four million, seven, seven, six, thirty-three for next year, for the budget we're using, for next year where it's not using up, and that's made three hundred thousand, which raises to the four, four, seven, six, thirty-three. We, we recently had a Moody's report where it says, moreover, the fund balance, the percent of operating revenue is around nineteen, whatever, under Moody's, which is under other Moody's cities rated nationwide. So if you, when the ratings look at it, they're looking at that higher rating. And a lot of them just that, they're looking for probably at least a three month coverage there, which is closer to like a twenty-five percent factor. In Connecticut, it's sometimes it's a little bit lower because they have the ability, you know, we have the ability to raise revenue based upon tax, and it's somewhat relatively consistent. With the issues that we talked about here, just this, this year, there's a possibility of fluctuations in ECS. And that could be just based on cuts from the governor if they need to be done, or also based upon potential lower access cost, access cost coverage that may be reduced. We have the potential lowering of items from the property tax rental may not be as high, as well as we're trying to now achieve some property sales, acquired company two, older company two. And then we're still working on our, we have a decent number in there, projected revenue from the Brainerd place. So we're still hoping that that comes through. So there are a lot of unknowns that are there. And there are, are knowns, and we try to keep our fund balance at, at healthy levels and, and, and have that in place so when we do use ratings and/or just general cash flow in or during year, during year, cash, although they come in consistently. There's an influx in July, another influx in, in January. So we need to be able to bridge that gap as, as the monies come in throughout the year. Does that help explain what you're looking for, Mike?
It does. I mean, I think there were a lot of people that were interested in having that run through. Listen, I, I think you and Susan and, and our board has been good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I know it's unprecedented at times, but I feel comfortable having some cushion in there for next year because I think there's so many unknowns, as Ralph said, that I think having it there makes me feel more comfortable. Thank you, Tom.
So Tom, with regards to those numbers, just to make sure, I know that I left it off at your bottom, you know, the sheet you had, you know, we had talked about, I left it at the bottom number that accounted for the budget changes. Did you, did you just, I mean, you stopped it before the budget changes, right? You didn't talk about potential impact of this current budget in front of us, right?
I'm pretty sure I said that, yeah.
I'm sorry, maybe I.
Yeah, so, so after the capital usage, it was four, seven, seven, six, three, three, four, about four million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, so four, seven, 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 six, three, three. And then we're anticipating usage of three hundred thousand, which gives you four point four, seven, seven, six, three, three. And based upon the previous, or your budget that you had coming into, well, it's the same expense number, it's twelve point seven percent of that, of that number.
Okay, just want to make sure I didn't misstate you. Thanks.
Anyone else?
No, I was just going to comment to Lou about the Airline Trail that, you know, there may be some funds in some of the other accounts, like what if, what if we end up not having an affair, for instance, or, I don't know, or if the road race doesn't happen, there's some things like that. I do, I do think continuing the work on the Airline Trail is important. As we've seen, a lot of people, while we've been in this sort of lockdown period, have, that trail has been a godsend for a lot of people. So I just want to support you on that. I'd be an advocate of finding dollars for your, the engineer or whatever you need to, you mentioned that you need for that. That's it.
Susan?
I agree, yes.
Mike Hernandez?
Yes, hi, Mike.
Hi, hello, everyone. First off, I'd just like to say, I a hundred percent agree with what Ralph was saying earlier. Every word, every word, he couldn't have been more correct than what he had said. And me being the newest member on this board and going through my first budget deliberations, I would just like, I, I really thought this was going to go differently, knowing that our grant list went almost eleven million dollars. I was like, oh, great, this is awesome. We got, you know, we got some more money, we got some more income, we can spread it out through the Board of Education and the General Government. And I was riding high, thinking that we were going to have a fiscally sound year and that we can balance this budget to a near zero mill rate. But the one lesson, and I learned this a long time ago, is that I, in my equation, I forgot to add unexpected variables and instep COVID-19. And I did not account for that, and all the hardships it's put, it's putting everybody through. And what I felt really bad was that we've increased the water and sewer, we've increased permits, we've increased the landfill. And I was really, really hoping that we can get this mill rate down for everybody in Portland. But with that being said, the board, it, it did its due diligence. We put a lot of hours, a lot of crunching numbers. And I just like, I'm very proud to be a part of this situation here and how we're delivering crunching numbers. And with that being said, I, I think I'm on board with everybody. I could accept the, if we go to a point seven, five mill increase. Thank you.
Point five, seven?
Point five, seven, Mike.
Five, seven.
Point five, seven.
Even, even better.
So Rick, I guess we go back to you. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say.
No, I'm, I'm, I'll just, I'll just say this, and then I'll make a motion. You know, I look at, we represent all the people in Portland, and I know I was, I, I didn't want to see teacher cuts if, if they weren't necessary. But I also feel for the elderly and the working people in town that have been on furloughs or on fixed incomes, and they're struggling. So I think we all worked hard and we looked at every facet of our town population, and I think this is a reasonable budget that's, everybody's sharing some of the, some of the pain, so to speak, and hopefully going to reap some of the benefits from it. So with that, I'd like to make, make a motion that we adopt the budget with the minor changes that Jim put forth earlier this evening. And I don't know if you want me to recite them, or?
Actually, I think that the resolution that was sent to everyone, Rick, only looks at the expenditures.
Oh, okay.
So certainly with the changes in the revenues, if you take a look at the resolution that said, that states the 2020, 21 budget, the amount has not changed. Do you see that resolution?
Okay, where it shows the, at the bottom, it shows the Town, General Government, thirteen million.
Maybe you could read that so that everybody is familiar.
Okay. I'll read the resolution for the adoption of the 2020 dash, 2021 fiscal year budget. Whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant with Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number Seven, One, Number Thirteen, quote, "The suspension of in-person budget adoption requirements for municipalities," unquote. "The budget referendum was not held. And whereas the Board of Selectmen approved the proposed fiscal year budget 2020 dash, 2021 at a special meeting held on May twenty-six, 2020, resolve that the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Portland hereby adopts the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget in the amount of thirty-five million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, detailed as follows. Town, General Government, thirteen million, five hundred and eight, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Board of Education, twenty-one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight, sixty-one dollars."
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Jim, Tripp?
Yes.
Discussion? Verification from the Finance Director?
Yeah, the only question I do have is this question of the three thousand dollars for the Airline Trail. Is that something that you have interest, or because in theory you can add that in and it doesn't change the mill rate?
That suggestion was not made, but I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, this Lou again. I was thinking that possibly leaving things alone for now, leaving the resolution with a cut of the three thousand dollars, but find at least two thousand dollars in the Park and Rec Department's budget to be able to pay for a consultant for the Airline Trail, if that's, if that's the way to go, Susan. Otherwise, to put two thousand dollars back in that capital improvement, then that would be, that would be another way of doing it. Whatever way is easier, I'm, I'm okay with.
Well, I, when I listened to the discussion, the amount was not returned to the budget. I think it gets a little difficult when you're putting some back but not others. But again, I'll open it up to the board for what they would like.
I say we leave the budget as is.
Okay, that's my. Okay, that's Mike Hernandez.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I was gonna say, I, I understand Lou, what you're saying, I, I, I would think, I don't know how it works fiscally, but, yeah, I, I can't see the fear occurring in September. And that's two, twenty-five hundred dollars there, so I, I would think that certainly would be a viable source, even if we left the five hundred, like we did with some other groups as a seed for, for not having had it this year, and, and, you know, but I don't know how that works fiscally and how you would apply it, but you would think if that's gonna get moved around, it's, I just can't see the fear happening, but we'll, we'll find out in the next month or so, I would guess. That's my thought.
Tom, is there, is there any reason why we can't move it from one account to the Airline Trail Fund?
Excuse me?
Well, I mean, I, I obviously definitely make a cost to something, but the only reason I brought that up was, is the, because, you know, there's specific reasons when you do something fun to eat, that would cause you to go and have a, probably a special town meeting needed to increase that number. So all, all I do is just trying to say was, if you put the three thousand in, it eliminated that, you didn't, you would have to go back and it didn't really cause an effect other than increasing the town by, by three thousand, but, uh, you know, I guess you can also ignore what I'm talking about either.
You know, Susan, I think, I think the thing is, uh, it looks like we could, once the budget is set the way it is right now, there are funds within the budget, and Ralph, Ralph alluded to the fact that the fair may not happen. If we could use the, that money, or other monies, or money from the Park and Rec Department that isn't being used for that purpose, then that would be fine. I was just saying that, um, we would need some money for that, and that's something that, you know, can't operate without it.
Okay, so I think consensus is to leave things the way they are, and as we proceed in the budget year, and the needs arise, we, as we will have to do, I will tell you, for many of the accounts. And this is not the only one that you will need to make adjustments. And as was stated by, I think, each of our selectmen, we are in very unusual days. And they're not stopping today, nor tomorrow. So I think that I will echo what each of you said. And that is, the deliberations that you went through were arduous and difficult. And we thank everyone that helped us with this. And we implore more help as we go forward. And while there are restrictions on how we move money and how things occur in a budget, it is this board that makes those decisions. And I think flexibility and constant review and scrutiny of the budget is our responsibility moving forward. So I would concur that we leave the expenditures as presented, I will support the budget. Is it a perfect budget? In my estimation, it is not. But it is, after much deliberation, as I said, and much assistance from many of our employees, our board members, our citizens, and those who sent comments, and there were many. It's the best for the days that we are in. These COVID-19 days, as Mike Hernandez said, is a curveball that none of us anticipated. But it's exemplified in the difficulty that we're having with this budget. And I think the goodwill of our citizens, those that help us, need to progress. So again, I'm gonna repeat myself. This board will scrutinize the budget moving forward and work with other boards, the Board of Education, all of the other commissions and entities to make sure the Town of Portland does the best it can and remains the best it can be. Are there any other further comments? And I'll call for the vote of the resolution as presented by Selectman Sharon, seconded by Selectman Tripp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And gentlemen, thank you very much, I know how difficult this is, and obviously, you are an excellent board because you've risen to the occasion and come to a consensus, which, as I said last time we met, one of the most difficult budgets to put together. So compliments to you, and all the best as we move forward. The next item is setting the mill rate based on the budget that was just presented. And is there a motion to set the mill rate, which I believe from the discussion will be thirty-four point three eight, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, that's correct. There is a change to the, uh, to that resolution. The three, thirty-nine point nine seven is now thirty-nine point eight six after, uh, your, your other revenue changes.
Thank you.
And you, can you read that resolution then, Tom Robinson?
Whereas the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget from the Town of Portland estimates that four million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, uh, one hundred and forty-six dollars will be received from the state of Connecticut. And without this, the mill rate would be thirty-nine point eight six. Now therefore be it resolved that the mill rate, uh, for fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one being is hereby set at thirty-four point three eight.
Is there a motion to that effect by this, by a selectman?
I'll make that motion, Ralph.
Motion made by Ralph, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Mike.
Mike Pelton, seconded, discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much. The last item on the agenda is the reentry committee. And while I know that everyone did not have an opportunity to read everything, I do want to call the attention to you of what was sent. And some of you may have some comments on this. I'll preface the, uh, the discussion with the fact that, again, this is something that is ever-changing. The government of the state has sent us all a variety of, of, uh, actions for reentry. And as you know, we're in the first phase, which involves offices, outside dining, retail, and there are other areas as well. But those three primarily affect us at this point. So what I did send out, and I can make this available on our website, is we have information on our town offices. As you may know, our town offices were never closed during the COVID-19 pandemic so far. In that all of our employees have been working every day. And there were some days that we were not present because I asked that the buildings be closed so deep cleaning could occur. Our Public Works Department, who takes care of our buildings, and the General Government, did put forward protocols, and I'll run through them, um, in terms of how we enter our buildings. So at Town Hall, only the door near the flags is open. So employees and those who may need to come to Town Hall enter that way. There is, before you enter the building, a hand sanitizing station that everyone must use. As you enter the building, you're asked to wear a face covering mask until the employees get to their station, and we are fortunate that our offices are such that all the employees can be separated by at least six feet. When they cannot, they're asked to wear a face covering. I had a question about, um, some of our employees that work outside. And the same would be for them, if they're within less than six feet of someone, they must have a face covering. If they're working alone, which is more the preponderance of what we have people doing as they're outside, they don't need to wear the mask at that point because there's no one near them, and they are outside, or they're in their town vehicle without someone with them. Then when someone needs to contact us, they're asked to call by telephone or by email, which people have been doing. And fortunately, the weather has improved and we are able to meet people outside and transact business as is needed. If there's a need for someone to come into the building, they follow those protocols. And it has been working very well. And again, I want to compliment our town employees for managing our town and making certain that things are running smoothly. They didn't skip a beat, and we've been able to be able to provide all of the services, albeit in a different fashion. I'll point out that our parks have been open with a few exceptions. We did close Nolan Field, and that remains closed to the public. There is no ballgames being played. And Bransfield Park was closed for a period of time because there were a number of violations occurring at that park. So after a fashion, I asked Nate Foley, our director, to review that, and he determined it could be open for, I think, six hours a day, and he or his assistant open and shut that park. Only walking is allowed there, the community garden will be open under restrictions, and there is one volunteer that is offered to assist, to make sure that social distancing occurs. But people are still able to utilize the community garden and be able to use that for growing vegetables and other products. Within the public library, as you know, we were making repairs, which the library got a grant to fund, and the rest of the funding came from their endowment fund. Additional tax dollars were not used for that improvement. And while that was occurring, they had already made arrangements to work out of other town offices. Most of the improvements have been completed, I think almost all of them. And they are now back in the building, and they've started to get books returned to them. And they will be likely issuing protocols as to how they will disseminate materials. And it may be curbside attendance for folks that are picking up books that are pre-arranged. But I don't want to get into that in any detail because that hasn't been announced yet. The senior center remains closed to the public, the downstairs area is being used on Mondays by the food bank and Thursdays by the food bank. On Mondays, they've expanded their hours for our residents only from four PM to six PM. And people are asked to enter by way of the Portland Library entrance and to drive along toward the senior center, and food is distributed. Last Monday, there was fresh food available, and there were many people who came, we hope more will come now that those hours have expanded. On Thursdays, they operate also out of this building with volunteers. Mike Pelton and, and Jim Tripp have been assisting with that. They deliver food to Chatham Court and to Corey Heights, and also anyone who needs to have food, they can call ahead, eight, six, oh, three, four, two, six, seven, nine, eight, I believe, to contact the food bank, and they are able to, um, get food on Thursdays from nine AM to noon. If you want details, we had a podcast that Dave Kozminski hosted, and it's podcast number nine, and Ruth Mayo went over all the details of the food bank. I've received some calls in my office from some very, um, difficult stories to convey, and there are people looking for food that were not able to and weren't familiar with accessing our food bank. So if you know of anyone that is challenged and needs some assistance, they can always call my office or the food bank or any of our selectmen, and we'll be certain that they get food. There is no need for any person or family to go without food in the Town of Portland. We have sufficient dollars within the food bank, and we have sufficient, sufficient food within the food bank, thanks to the generosity of many, many businesses, many, many individuals who have contributed and continue to contribute to our food bank. On Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from ten AM to, I believe, about two PM, Saint Mary's Church has opened its school door. So as you, on Freestone Avenue, face the church, to the right is what is the former school, and it's the, the place where religious education occurs. You can enter and leave your donated food in the lobby, there's a table there. And volunteers from the church then make sure that the food is appropriately stored until such time that they can safely bring it to the food bank. I want to thank the church for their help, I want to thank the food bank and all the volunteers and all of the generous donations. It is a critical resource in our community that we don't take for granted. A transfer station and recycling center is open to the public. You can purchase trash bags at the transfer station, is that correct, Bob? Yes. And at Adams Market. And the permits can be purchased at the transfer station. And Bob, are the, are the tickets available for July one yet? Yes, they are. So if you're purchasing your permits, they'll be effective for next fiscal year. I also sent you something from the Town Clerk's Office, and Ryan Curly is making operational changes in terms of absentee balloting. Every registered Republican and registered Democrat will receive an absentee ballot application in the mail from the Secretary of State's office. And you can then return that to the Town Clerk, and, excuse me, due to an executive order of the governor, any voter may receive an absentee ballot regardless of any reason. So if for some reason you don't receive the application in your home mail, you can contact Ryan Curly and he'll be sure that you get that. The land records remain free to view online while the office is closed to the public. And Ryan has made certain that the land records are available from nineteen twenty-three through the present day. If you're in need of a map, reach out by email, and the Town Clerk's Office will certainly assist you. And he also will have a link on our website that you can find the, the land records by clicking on that. Recordings may be mailed, dropped off, or sent electronically. Appointments are encouraged, and they certainly are, are willing to help. Hunting and fishing licenses may be purchased in person, by email, or over the phone, and available online. Notary public services are resumed and are available during regular business hours in the Town Clerk's Office. Recommendation, call ahead. Dog licensing is processed by mail, email, in person, online, and more information is on our website. Appointments for the filing of death certificates are strongly encouraged to call ahead. Marriage licenses, call the Town Clerk's Office, schedule an appointment. And vital statistics, also call ahead and information will be given. I mentioned the library. I have visited one of our businesses today, I went to Portland Golf Course. They are complying with all the requirements for keeping their business open, and they are contemplating some outdoor dining. The Chatham Health District, Liz Davidson accompanied me, and we're, we're happy to reach out to any business if they'd like a field visit and/or assistance. Mary Dickerson came up with a very simple two questions form for any restaurant that wants to have temporary outdoor dining. And they can access that as well on our website. All fees are waived for that. The application comes in, within ten days, if the town does not issue the permit, and Chatham Health does not react, it becomes valid. So there is a time limit so that our businesses can get back up and running. Mary Dickerson did a nice job and came up with a guide, and she renews it and updates it as our businesses reopen for the outdoor dining. And she has listed all of the restaurants and eateries that are available. She also came up with a retail business guide, which she also will be updating, that's also available online. All of the rules associated with the reopening. All of the rules associated with the reopening. And a business person was very, very grateful that the state of Connecticut has a listing of all of various vendors that can provide some of the personal protection equipment from hand sanitizer to masks to other equipment that may be necessary. It's a very long list. And in fact, this one business was able to get some of the cleaning supplies that he needed as well as the hand sanitation. The Portland Library is available to help any business that wants to reopen if they're having trouble navigating the website, navigating the ct.gov and the Department of Economic and Community Development. Janet Nocheck has already helped, I know personally, of at least one business. And they remain open and they are very adept at helping people find information. So if you're unable to get ahold of the planning office immediately, but you're only looking for information, certainly access our library. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and perhaps some suggestions that you've heard from some of our businesses. Mike, did you have any comments? I know Mike Hernandez wanted to have some, some dialogue on this topic.
I know, I know we're waiting on the state of Connecticut to figure out what to do and everything. But my only suggestion is that I rather err on the side of caution. And even if we have to extend it a little further out for some of our programs, just not to rush into things. And like, for instance, we'll say the senior center, you know, they say it's all right to open that up, especially with their age and everything and the exposure to COVID. I would rather see us take actions and maybe extend it a little bit longer and to see how the other towns are making out first before we do it. I'd rather not be trend centers in this department. I'd rather like be cautious. I wouldn't wanna be aggressive at all. Another, another, or is it like the parking rec? I'd like to see the parks open, obviously as quick as possible. But I'd also like to limit it to just Portland kids showing up. So by what I'm getting at there is like, if we do have competitive kids playing, who obviously would be playing out of town kids, I would rather see us not open up so quick and rush into that because then we lose our, what's the word I'm looking for, like our controlled, you know, I wouldn't say a controlled situation. Because once we have out of town people and then we don't know what they have already gone through, what they're doing. So those are the two things that I would like to definitely err on the side of caution with. I'd rather, if we can at all, hold off on a couple of those things.
Excellent, thank you.
Could I, could I talk for a second?
Ralph?
Yeah, Mike, to your point, you know, one of the good things I'm seeing is that we are working together with some of the surrounding areas or towns or, you know, with regards to, say, for instance, the library, they're looking to see what's gonna come out of the Connecticut Library Association. But they're also working with, Janet's working with the local area towns as well. Because you have a situation where just kinda what you're alluding to is that if you become the first library to open up and no one else has opened up around you, all of a sudden you're gonna have this swell of people come into your location. So we see that happening. Nate is doing it within Park and Rec as well. He's had conversations, he's certainly working with the Connecticut Parks and Rec Association. So you try to see something come out that's more common across the board. So it's the same thing. And I know that Chatham Health is engaged with a number of our discussions. Certainly some of the discussions they've had in, in the, the school administration, say for instance, with regards to the graduation, what we like to, you know, do in town with regard to graduation, passing it by to make sure that Chatham Health is okay with that. So there's every effort to try to do that. That is the challenge because it's like everyone's sitting and waiting for someone else to make a move so they kinda can evaluate what happens. So, so I agree with your, your stance of trying to stay back and let's see a little bit around us. But when we get to a situation where we do it together, I think that works as well.
Anyone else?
Susan, I have a question for you. As always, with regards to opening up or so, what has been the state guidance on testing, for example? So some of the, some of the businesses that we have that may be dealing with elderly or whatnot, is it required testing at that end? Do we have other businesses that we should look at that, visiting nurses, I mean, whatever it is? What's been the suggestion from them? And is it, is that an area that we can also become over cautious on?
I know it's expanding. I'm not certain of every, every age group and what the recommendations are going to be. It is extended and is expanding. I don't know if Bob Shay wanted to add anything to that because he's been following this closely. Bob?
Oh, still, he can't, still can't.
Oh, he, okay. Why don't I put that on for the next time and as I get more information? There is more information coming out, Mike, that's a good question. I'll be certain to get to you. I'm sorry, who's speaking? I, I don't know who that was. Was it Mike again? Pelton? No? Okay, I heard someone.
I did too.
Okay. Anyway, testing, I'll get you more information on that, be happy to do that. Okay, yep. And we'll try to get an update on that, Mike, on our podcast on Thursday. We'll get some more information on that. I hope that you're able to avail yourselves of that. There's, and if any of you would like to participate, let me know. And be happy to have you as one of our guests on the podcast. It's very informative and people learn a lot about all these different things that are ongoing. So if you'd like to, give me a call, we'll put you on. I'd love to hear from you and some of the things that, that are so important to our residents. So let me know that. And I also wanna compliment our parade committee. Parade is in quotations. This year, it was a very, very solemn ceremony that we held. And Tim Dickerson was the host. Sarah Sterry Rutter was our chairman. And they put together a beautiful program in tribute to our fallen heroes, our soldiers who have lost their lives in service to our country. And I encourage you to go to YouTube and you can find the tape of the ceremony. And it was beautifully done by our Town Tech Educational Partnership Program. Our students were just amazing in terms of the singing of the Star Spangled Banner, as well as the band and the performance that they had. I hope that you're able to look at it, some of the drone footage that was also done by a Portland High School student and the work that Dave and Kevin and their other folks within the educational partnership did. It's really, really well done. So thank you. So all of these things, visit the homepage of our website and you should be able to find them. That's all I had on reentry committee, but it is something we'll continue to have on our agenda. I would suggest that we cancel tomorrow night's meeting. Would you agree?
I would agree.
Unless you'd like to come again, but I don't think we have any business for tomorrow night. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lou, seconded by Rick, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, good evening.